I'd like to welcome everybody to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It's Monday, February 19. I would like to ask you to join us and rise in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Grant, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Present.
Ms. Slade?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant, present.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Reverend Mathias?
Here.
President Faub?
Present.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda as president?
So moved.
Support for that?
Support.
Alligator, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Thank you. First on our agenda is the celebrations.
Dr. Faub and members of the board, I'd like to ask Dr. Rand Gorman to come forward, please.
She is running into service. She is running into service. She's joining. She told me she's already signed. I think maybe...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent Weather O'Neill, President Faub, distinguished members of our Board of Education. The 36 Annual Giants Awards Unbanquet took place on Saturday, February 3, at DeVos Place in downtown Grand Rapids. Since 1983, 13 African-Americans and/or organizations are recognized annually for their exceptional contributions shaping the history and quality of life of those in greater Grand Rapids. This year, Grand Rapids Public Schools had four recipients who received these distinguished awards. These individuals include Mrs. Carolyn Evans, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, who received the Hattie Beverly Education Award; Mrs. Christina Johnson, Public Safety Department Sergeant, who received the Walter Cole Public Service Award; and Mr. Rondo Cooper, SEL Consultant, who received the Phyllis Scott Activist Award. And in addition to the aforementioned names, we had one more recipient, Ms. Binti Abdi. Ms. Binti Abdi is a Union High School senior, and you all know her as a student representative to your Board of Education. Binti received the Distinguished Junior Giants Award, the Cedric Ward Leadership Scholarship, which recognizes a senior student in the Kent Intermediate School District. This scholarship is awarded to a student of African-American heritage who is nominated and demonstrates the essence of a junior giant, which are: community involvement and impact, academic and/or athletic accomplishments, academic achievement, and academic progress. Binti, as I said, is a Grand Rapids Public Schools Union High School senior. She is the president of the National Honor Society. She was on the wrestling team, she was on the tennis team, she's in the Mayor's Youth Council, she's on the GRPS Student Council. She is a student representative to the Board of Education. She is a battalion commander for Junior ROTC overseeing 103 students at Union High School. She was the GRPS Cadet of the Year. She was the YWCA Tribute Award recipient. She was the top female marksman for the Grand Rapids Police Department, Grand Rapids Police Department Voyager Program member, Grand Rapids Fire Department or Fire Academy member, Business Professionals of America member, GRPD Impact Program member. This is not an exhaustive list. [laughter] Ain't no junior to that giant. And so on and so on and so on, right?
And many more to come.
That's right. After high school, Binti will be enlisting in the U.S. Army, and she has been accepted to Davenport University to study cyber defense. And as she said before, her ultimate goal is to become a prime minister of a country that is having some challenges. My assumption is, once Binti takes over, they will be on their way to addressing those challenges. So, Binti, congratulations today.
Awesome. Awesome. [applause]
Do you have anything to say to our Board of Education?
Thank you. It's been an honor, honestly. I do the things I do because I love to do them, not to get recognized like this, but it's definitely an honor. Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
And graduate from high school.
You're so proud.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to ask Mrs. Laura Lamore and Bridget Chaney will come up with Troy Wilbon.
This guy is Mr. Lewis. Troy Wilbon.
Good evening, Superintendent Neal, President Faub, and distinguished members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Troy Wilbon. He is the principal for Harrison Park, one of our K-8 buildings, and that is the location where our next celebrant is from. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Wilbon to give you more information about that.
Good evening, Superintendent Weather O'Neill, President Faub, and our distinguished board members. I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce you to Ms. Heather Galk. Ms. Heather Galk is a resource teacher at Harrison Park. We are here to celebrate Ms. Galk on becoming a National Board Certified Teacher just recently, this past December. Ms. Galk, with her accomplishments, Ms. Galk is a huge advocate also for our students and is very involved with technology being integrated into the classrooms. And she's also a very highly advocate for our students at the state level as well in moving technology into the classrooms. She has been active, and I'm sorry, and I'm just fortunate to be here with Ms. Heather today and also to have her as part of our GRPS team. So please join me in congratulating Ms. Heather Galk on her accomplishment of being recognized. Also being recognized as a National Board Certified Teacher comes a $5,000 check.
Oh, wow. Wonderful. [applause]
And Ms. Chaney, do you want to introduce?
So, Kathy Nelson, the school's facilitator at Harrison Park, and he works very closely with Mr. Wilbon. Just happy to be here today. Appreciate all the work that he does. Come along with us. Thank you. Thank you. Awesome. [applause]
That National Board certification is tough to get.
So, back to you, Ms. Nelson.
I just have a couple of announcements to make. Two of the announcements relating to GRPS student as a whole. One of them is many of Grand Rapids Police, Grand Rapids Public Schools have been included in the Impact Program for Grand Rapids Police Department, and they've been going for couples, several months now. We've been going over police relations and the involvement with youth, and just February 7th, we were able to help the chief of police, the chief, chief of police, deputy chief, and the captain go over the honesty, the new honesty policy, which is pretty cool. We were invited to go to the March 7th police at the public library to help him facilitate and things of that nature. Another thing is the WZZMTV-13 invited several students from Grand Rapids Public School of Girls to discuss about body image, and it's airing tonight at 11:00 p.m. Two of the items I would like to discuss has to do with my school. The varsity basketball team just had their last game against Fruitport, and they won. Another thing is the Gerald T.C. students were, the students that were showing that they're committed to the program were appreciated and taken to the fire department and also roller skating. And then on a personal note, I would like to say that I have a regional competition for Skills USA this Saturday.
Nice. Good for you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Not on board yet. Which items?
Secretary's report.
Yes. So, we have the Academic Achievement Committee meeting that will take place on Tuesday, February 20th, at 9:00 a.m. in the board chambers. Finance Committee will meet on Tuesday, February 27th, at 4:00 p.m., also in the board chambers. And our Ad Hoc Policy Committee meets Wednesday, February 28th, at 8:00 a.m. in room 101. Also a reminder that the FAFSA deadline is approaching. The deadline to submit your free application for federal student aid is quickly approaching. If your child will be attending college in the fall, you must complete the FAFSA by March 1st to be eligible for financial aid. This includes grants, loans, and work-study programs. And if you need help with that, you can contact the school's counseling office for assistance with your FAFSA. You can also contact Shayla Willis at Two, she's with the Two College Through College program, and her email address is swillis@grand-rapids.mi.us, or you can call 456-3102.
Thank you. We have a couple of committee chair updates. Dr. Baker, could you give us an update on the City Board Liaison Committee?
You know, since you were in attendance, I figured that you would do that. So I was prepared to, prepare for it after you said that you weren't going to be here, but then when you said you were going to be here, I assumed that you would do it.
I think Julie sent me an email that you were doing it.
So who's doing it?
Well, I think between Ms. Grant and Mr. Baker, Dr. Baker, we saw. Give an update on it.
Well, I mean, what's really important is that, first of all, this is...
Good segue from the secretary's report.
Yeah.
College through college.
Yeah, so City Board Liaison Meeting oversee, for those of you that aren't familiar with this, is basically a discussion quarterly on the issues related to children in Grand Rapids, specifically those that go to Grand Rapids Public Schools, and how the city of Grand Rapids and Grand Rapids Public Schools partners to work on that. In the past years, it was even including, how do we deal with the fact that snow is piling up on the street and we can't figure out how to get the kids to school? So it's a conversation about keeping kids safe and then moving them forward. It also oversees the Office of Our Community's Children, which is a joint venture between the city and Grand Rapids Public Schools. And specifically, the last meeting, we spent a lot of time talking about the initiative of Two College Through College, which is, again, this joint venture, including lots of community organizations and the public library to support students essentially once they graduate from high school, as they move on to college, and then hopefully through college, providing them supports along the way. And that's what was big in my mind. We actually had, I mean, this is kind of separate, but the superintendent and the mayor, Len Hemstra, and others met on Friday morning with college presidents and other folks from colleges to discuss Two College Through College and remind them of support. And so we're looking for ways to sustain that office, and it's become very successful. Over 1,200 students in the last year have received support from Shayla Willis and the Two College Through College Office to help them succeed at small levels to pretty big, pretty big problems to be solved.
Yes, I think we had a great discussion about the opportunity to bring the Promise Zone to our students and how the city can support that. We also just discussed other programs that were going on in the city and how we can leverage those for our students and have more students take advantage of things that would prepare them for college, fund college, and make sure that when they get to college that they're prepared. So we had a great conversation just about how do we get those resources to more of our students.
And I want to give Ms. Grant credit in talking with the city is embracing a lot of challenges around affordable housing and losing families because of the lack of affordable housing and their, you know...
Considering zoning.
Changes and what tools are within their ability. And we had just come from the advocacy conference, kind of dealing with that on a school level. To what extent do we ensure that there are spots for our families in schools, very successful schools, when they become, you know, very popular? So we had talked about that a little bit and how we can combine efforts to ensure that we create stability for the families we support. Do you have anything else?
No, that's great.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Any questions from anybody else? If you, you know, have interest on the agenda, I just believe I'll... Academic Achievement Committee, Reverend Mathias.
I think as Ms. Grant said, we're meeting tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, and part of the issues that we're going to address are the instructional council meetings and updates. Again, part of the Academic Achievement Committee is to really hear the data that our school is producing in regards to how we are equipping our kids for the future. And so we're very excited about that. So anyone's welcome to come. It is a public meeting, so you're welcome to come 9 o'clock in the morning.
Reverend Mathias, Superintendent's report.
Dr. Faub, I'll add to the ISD Schools of Choice. It is time.
Okay. All right, so we have an action item as to approve the resolution for the KISD Schools of Choice. I know we have some new board members, and I think it would be great to give a little context around this resolution.
You ready?
Yeah.
So, part of the role of Community and Student Affairs, Mel Atkins is the executive director, and the school resolution, the ISD resolution, comes out of Community and Student Affairs. And so between Mel and I, we will both share the information of why we're in this agreement with the Kent Intermediate School District.
Good evening, Superintendent Weather O'Neill, Board President, Dr. Faub, and board members. Just to give a little context, the KISD Schools of Choice Resolution is for the agreement for the district has the schools within the Kent Intermediate School District to open up seats that allows for students outside of GRPS boundaries to apply, you know, and attend the district. In this, for this upcoming year, we've opened up 500 slots for that to happen. And the window is, a short window's coming up. The window is April 9th through May 11th, that you can, so this can apply to come to our district.
Okay, I'd like to ask then a question.
I'm still looking for you, Don.
Change, change. So we let up to 500 kids come to us.
Correct.
Do we have any control over when and where and how our kids get to leave our district?
No, no, that's a good question. And so we open up 500 slots, but other districts, depending on their enrollment and what their size of their buildings, they open up various number of slots either, too. And so it's just the application, and sometimes there could be at other districts or hopefully here, there could be waiting lists, and then it's a random lottery.
But there's no, once they leave our district, they're gone, and do we do any follow-up as to why they've left, or can we get them back?
No. So it's really a matter of choice. And so as seats come open in other districts, if people choose to apply for those, they become a student of that district for their entire career, right? And they still can come home if they choose to, but we don't recruit. We don't even know who's going until the first week of school. Kids, families have an option of applying based on the number of seats. Rather than be a part of the state, because this is a state deal of Schools of Choice, we in the ISD have chosen as superintendents to create our own and the state approve the plan where we will share students within our ISD.
Okay.
And the same, for students that come to us, then we own them for life as well.
Okay. I guess my question is that, well, let's just, for example, Northview. You know, I live in the Northeast End, and a lot of kids go over to Northview. Northview can take as many of our kids as can fit into their district?
Mm-hmm. As many spots? If they have slots open, that is correct. It's left up to that particular board or superintendent, and that does happen.
And is that the only, that timeframe, that six or seven weeks that they have to apply?
There's actually two. So it's one window now, and there's another window later in the year. So there's two windows.
And that's the same for kids who want to come here?
That's correct.
Those same windows?
It's the ISD plan.
Okay, so if you don't apply during the window, you don't get in unless you apply for the next window?
That is correct.
Okay.
So we are voting tonight to open our seats, not to allow our seats, our students, to leave. Is that correct? Or we're just voting on this resolution that you have with the ISD?
It's a resolution, right. With the...
Of sharing students.
It's a resolution with the ISD to share students, and it's either this plan or the state's plan. And all of the superintendents in the ISD agree to this particular plan. We created our own plan that was approved by the state. So you don't have an option of...
It's state law.
Right. You don't have an option of...
No, I understand that part. I just, I just wondered, just seems like some districts get a lot of our kids and...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good questions, Ms. Ross. Do we have a motion for approval of the Schools of Choice Resolution?
So moved.
Support for that?
Support.
I measly appease.
Any deliberations, questions? Let's take the vote.
All right. Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion case.
Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda Grouping. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda Grouping.
Second for that?
Support.
And take the vote.
All right. Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
And President Faub?
Yes.
Here's...
We have no discussion items. Do we have public comment?
We do. We have public comment by Ms. Irma Menchaka. I said that correctly.
I'm at Union, too. I'm very happy to hear all your reports. Good evening, Superintendent Weather O'Neill, board members, our student advocate, and the public. I want to share, I'm at Union High School, and I love to brag about Union, so I'm going to brag about you, too. My name is Irma Menchaka. I'm a school social worker. Tonight, I'll give you an example of a social work sandwich, which is what I do with my students. It's happy news, sad news, happy news. So the happy news is, I'm here to brag about Union High School. This was a gift to kindergartners in two elementary schools with GRPS from our ninth-grade academy students. These are tiny little shirts.
Oh, that is so cute.
And it was so precious. At Christmas time, they came in the week before our holiday break, and the ninth-grade academy... Future?
Union Red Hawk.
Union Red Hawk. So, and they were so cute. Our ninth-grade academy students were the hosts, and they had the students come in to four different classrooms. They rotated activities. They had different Christmas crafts, different ornaments, and then they had cookies that they decorated. So it was just like fun all the way around. And you might ask, why talk about it now? It's past. That was December. But we planted seeds for educationally fabulous expectancy seeds. That's what we did, those future Union Red Hawks. I know in kindergarten, I never thought about high school, just like I didn't even know where my high school was at that time. And now for the sad news. I've been with Grand Rapids Public Schools for 22 years, and I'm retiring at the end of this school year. It's sad because these 22 years have been a privilege for me in working with our students, their families, our staff, and our administrators, and I have loved my job. So as I look back, I, too, have planted, over the course of 22 years, educationally fabulous expectancy seeds. I run into my students, well, a couple of weeks ago at Big Boy, he was a cook at the restaurant, and he came, he saw me, and he came out from the kitchen to give me a handshake, and I thought, oh, that's so cool. But I run into my students at Powwows, I run into them at the malls, I run into them at Myers, they're working. And I was driving through McDonald's the other day, getting my iced tea, and the girl that gave me my iced tea said, "You used to work at juvenile detention, didn't you?" I said, "Yeah," because I worked there for four years. She says, "I was one of your students." And I said, "I'm so proud of you, you're working." So that is just like, it's very, very, it's rewarding for me, so I know it's fabulous. So that's the sad news that I'm retiring, but it's really happy news, because the last part of my social work sandwich is more happy news. Like I said, it's not the end, it's only the beginning. I'm an Apache Indian, and when I completed my ancestry search, you know, I knew I was Apache Indian, but I discovered I'm 1% Eastern European Jew. And I went, whoa, how did that one come in here? But it was funny, three years ago, I volunteered, I went to Israel, and I volunteered with VFI, Volunteers for Israel, with their IDF, Israeli Defense Force. And it was fabulous. I was at a medical army camp, and we prepared hundreds of the 36-pound medic backpacks. And I thought, wow, this is precious. We took out expired medication and put in new meds and trach tubes and all. It was just fabulous. So I plan on returning to Israel in July, but this time, not only volunteering, I'm laying the initial groundwork with the end goal of moving to Israel. I want to work at the U.S. Embassy. Imagine that, a Native American, not only a Native American, this Native American, working and representing the U.S. at the embassy in Israel. It's in Tel Aviv now, and next year it's going to move to Jerusalem. So I am just so excited, and that is my ending good news. So I suggest that you adapt it to your life. Good news, sad news, good news. Our kids love it.
Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes.
That's awesome. It's great. Do we have any other public comment?
No, that is all we have.
Superintendent's comment?
No comment, Dr. Faub.
Ms. Grant, what do you got?
I just want to say that I am continuously amazed by this wonderful student advocate that we have here. I'm so proud of you. When I think I can't be any more proud, you do something else amazing. I just want to tell you, just continue, I know you will, but also that there are people, there are children in our district who need to hear your story, because they can be the next Jew, and I'm just so proud of you. Thank you.
No comment.
Yes, I join Ms. Grant in congratulating and expressing my pride in you and your accomplishments. And I think that you are so much more typical of teenagers and young people in this world than some of the bad things we might hear on television, and so I'm very proud to work and to serve with you. And I'm also very touched by the lady who just spoke to us, I'm sorry, Ms.?
Irma.
Menchaka. I am so touched by the kinds of things you said, because as a teacher myself, for 37 years teaching kids at a high school and running into them, you bring tears to my eyes because it's the greatest job I ever had, and I congratulate you on your career, and I thank you on behalf of Grand Rapids Public Schools for your years here and what you've done for our kids. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Dr. Baker?
Yeah, again, you're amazing. March 1st deadline for the FAFSA, it's really important, and please be listening for those ways that you could get some help. And I just want to say, with a lot of anger about what happened in Florida last week, and I just think that we all have to find our voices to make sure that some action is taken. I'm not suggesting what that action should be, but it should be something or a lot of things. So, and, you know, certainly making our children safe is a pretty basic issue for our society, so whatever that is. Thanks.
I agree with everything that's been said, and Ms. Abdi, when I grow up, I want to be just like you. I think that you set the example, and congratulations on the retirement, Ms. Menchaka. It feels good. I'd do it again.
All right, yeah, just ditto.
and I just think that we all have to find our voices to make sure that some action is taken. I'm not suggesting what that action should be, but it should be something or a lot of things. So, and, you know, certainly making our children safe is a pretty basic issue for our society. So whatever that is, thanks.
I agree with everything that's been said, and Ms. Abdi, when I grow up, I want to be just like you. I think that you set the example, and congratulations on the retirement, Ms. Minchaka. It feels good. I'd do it again.
All right, yeah, just ditto. That's it for me. Thanks.
Yeah, just really exciting to see that our district is moving along and creating just that, kind of that wave of expectation, even from kindergarten on through. We need that. I hope that our count day went well and that we exceeded our goals. Just, again, want to really encourage folks to get involved, continue to get involved in our district. Parents turn out for your child's school days and the events that happen locally. It's really critical, and that's it.
I want to express my appreciation for you as well. And I think I especially, you know, in your comments that you said you are doing what you're doing, and I just sense a most centeredness coming from you, and it's tough to be an analyst, I think. I hope you are of good influence on those around you to find their center and their love and their joys, which is emanating from you. It's really nice to be there.
Thank you.